See the one in the downtown as well. I think from a safety perspective, I think they look at it from that to the right in, right outs, making it easier for traffic flow, all those different things. Erin, do you have anything you'd want to share with regards to that?
Um, not really. I'll just, I just go over the safety downtown one, especially like, it's like I'm always walking or biking there and it can be really unsafe. So I'm driving, so I think clearing up some of that congestion. I think people in Wisconsin choose QuickTrip.
I'd be willing to add just some perspective on um how the development process works a little bit. And this could be, this could be, could become a 10 hour conversation, but, and Brad, if, if you wanted to jump in and participate back and forth with something, with, with us on the conversation, shoot your hand up and I'd be happy to bring you in and we can talk together about it here. But um, the, the way that zoning, zoning works is we have a zoning classification for different areas of the village. And it's generally pretty broad. So it might be, you know, C, C, C1, commercial one, or commercial two, or C1D, commercial downtown. And those different classifications have a, a span of uses, a long list of uses. You can find them online in the village's zoning code. And um, as long as a use is uh, as long as the, the proposed use is listed as a potential appropriate use for that particular zoning, then we really can't judge it based on the user, if that makes sense. So if the zoning code allows for gas stations, we can't, this, we can't essentially discriminate based on whether it's, it's a Hy-Vee's fueling station, QuickTrip, or Mefferts um, or, or BP. So, so uh, that is, you know, there really is a legal challenge there if we were to pick and choose that way. So as long as the user, in this case, uh, in this case, QuickTrip uh, uh, making the case and proceeding through the process of getting approval, um, they're, they're, you know, that, that's within the realm of possibility. And the place where the village does have control or authority is identifying the spaces in the village where they feel that those types of uses ought to be placed. And often that's done based on traffic patterns and the development that's occurring around the village, or maybe where a particular use, particular uh, use might be needed within the community. So the board makes those decisions as they assemble the comprehensive plan, which was last updated three years ago or so. We try to update it every seven years or so. Um, so that's kind of how that happens and I, you know, I get the, don't we have enough QuickTrips? Um, uh, but, but we really can't judge it based on the user, if that makes sense. Same with pizza places, same with banks, uh, and I can go on, on down that list.
I'd say the only other comment I'd have on that is the, the QuickTrip that's currently going up um, right by Boston's Pizza, was um, a Meffert location that they were going to be building and before QuickTrip was there. And uh, Mefferts chose not to build on that site and QuickTrip obviously capitalized on that. So um, that would have put three Meffert stations in Wannakee, just like there's going to be three QuickTrips in Wannakee. Um, so that's another, another small thing that we looked at as well. I mean, it was already slated to be a gas station there, so. Okay, any other questions from folks? Raise hands or if you want to do the Q and A, that's fine too.
Okay, I have Angie again.
Okay, great.
All right, there you go, Angie.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just um, read a couple of days ago about the last meeting where there was some talk about discrimination in Wannakee, you know, after the incident with the students yelling out of their cars. And I think it was said at that meeting that um, Chris wanted to hear directly from the, from the people, which I appreciate, but I just wanted to share too, that sometimes people don't feel comfortable sharing directly, you know, with like the village president or like someone of authority, or someone who doesn't have something common with them. So just wanted to see if you could reconsider maybe with the next budget, or maybe having like the 2020 census results in, if a community, like the Hispanic community or African American community has grown, if we can have more representation or at least have a liaison.
So can you repeat the last part of that, more representation, and then I missed it after that?
Oh, like maybe have a, like a liaison position?
Liaison, okay. Okay.
Someone people would feel comfortable sharing to, that could then bring issues up to you. And that people know that they're going to be heard and feel comfortable sharing because I've had sometimes people reach out to me. Um, and even though the staff for the Wannakee neighborhood connection are awesome, Stacy and Lisa, they're amazing. Um, one, one is a language barrier, of course. Um, but then the other thing is like, they are scared or embarrassed to ask things or, or say things because they're, they just don't feel like they're going to understand. And then they come to me, for example. So just want to use that, just as an example, as to maybe why people wouldn't reach out to you. But I appreciate that you want to hear directly from, from the community.
Okay.
I would say that I saw Cass Punsle wrote exactly, I think that, that should, could be interpreted as a, a ditto sort of, sort of response to Angie's comment about representation or liaison sort of connection. I will, Chris, Chris and Erin, if you want to talk about it, you're welcome to. I would say that um, I've really enjoyed starting to interact and listen to um, the conversations that are occurring on the Want to Talk Diversity Facebook page. Um, I, I wear quite a few hats. I do my best to try to stay attentive to it. Um, and that's certainly um, helping me in my role as your village administrator, uh, start to gather and understand perspectives more. It seems like it's been a, a place where, where a lot of different people have been willing to share their feelings and thoughts. Um, granted, that's not for everybody and probably, and maybe isn't a comfortable place for everybody either. Um, but I'm, I'm starting to really appreciate this sort of discussions that are occurring there. And I'm definitely paying attention and, and even at times reacting appropriately based on what might be asked or requested. So um, that's one thing I'm doing um, to start, uh, at least in terms of staying connected, so. Chris or Erin, did you have anything you wanted to add or?
Go ahead Erin, if you have anything.
Um, yeah, I would say I agree. I think um, we need, it's a long overdue dialogue that's really starting to get louder in our village. And um, I'm excited. I, yes, I love to listen and learn from people that have different experiences than me, so I know how to best represent them. And I think um, many ideas or forums and ways of communication that, you know, we can be open to and then also provide for people. Um, it's going to be really important. So I like your idea of a liaison. Um, I know that kind of came up at a meeting. This is a lot. Um, so I'm excited to see how we can um, having these different conversations and more. Thank you.
Thanks Erin. Yeah, I'm, we're going down this, this road and, and looking at different things that we can be doing in the community. Um, a liaison might be a way to go, maybe a, maybe a subcommittee within the village board. Um, you know, so we have more than just one individual potentially, um, that could be involved. Um, so yeah, I mean, it's something that we can definitely look into.
I'd add, Angie, yeah, I'd add Angie, that as much as I'd love, I think any of us would love to uh, really snap our fingers and make something happen quickly to provide satisfaction. Um, I think we've got to work through, work through some specifics. Um, and uh, it's something we're definitely willing to do. And I would say we are in the process of doing. So um, so I appreciate, appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
And if you could, Angie, also, um, if you wouldn't mind emailing me your contact info, so I know I have it to follow up with you on the, uh, on your survey question.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's t Schmidt at wannakee.com.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have, um, Cass Punsle has her hand up. Let me move Angie back out. There we go. Okay, Cass, I have you in now.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
You are.
Welcome Cass.
Hi, thank you. Um, I, backing on what Angie said, which I agree wholeheartedly. Um, again, that's the beauty of a liaison. I was a little bit disappointed when I saw the last uh, meeting where the whole idea of a liaison was kind of um, shut down almost. Uh, because language barrier is definitely one of them. Not only that, but as I've discussed this with other people, um, there's a lot of reasons why people who are facing discrimination would not feel comfortable coming to all of you. There is a lot of reasons. There are even children of color who might have a white parent, for example, who aren't comfortable always even talking to their own white parent about some of the things that they are going through. So it's a big ask. If you are expecting people to come to you all, whether individually or even at a public board meeting, and discuss and relate even via these listening sessions, different things that they're going through. Not only that, but these things end up being put in papers and everything else. I, I did not know at the last listening session that I participated in, that was going to end up in the paper with my name in it. Not that I'm ashamed or embarrassed of anything that I had to say, but I know there were people that were um, it, it was, it was something they were not expecting and they didn't want that. So that's, that right there is already going to shut some more people down because it is hard to talk about some of this stuff. It's, it's kind of like using the analogy of rape, you know, women don't want to talk to men about rape, you know, those kinds of, and a lot of women don't even report that. It's very similar in that way because it's, when you face this kind of discrimination, um, yeah, it's a difficult thing to talk about. So that's where liaison comes in. That's where liaison is able to, not just because of the language barrier, but because of all of those other things. Um, and I under, I appreciate the wanting the firsthand accounts, as was noted in that meeting. I appreciate that, but again, I have to tell you and I implore you, having been somebody who, for example, worked in a school, there were things going on with students of color in that school, in that high school, they didn't feel comfortable talking to anybody else about because everybody else in authority was white. So I'm telling you, you need to have somebody, it would be, it would be who view to have some sort of a liaison. And I understand the whole committee idea. Again, you still really need to have a contact person of some sort that, as Angie stated, people are going to feel comfortable with that because you don't know what it's like. You absolutely do not know what it's like to report discrimination or report things that have happened to you and the reaction that you get. And enough of us have been through that, that it will shut us down, you know, it will shut some people down from ever talking about it again. So that's, and we have no guarantees. You guys haven't even had diversity training. And I'm not necessarily faulting you guys for that, but that's another issue. As far as the training, I noticed that was one of those things that came up in your budget as, well, we got to see if there's money in the budget this year, maybe not till next year. I, I get that. I've got some issues there. This is, this is really critical. Like if you're going to move forward, if you really are taking this seriously about being invested in the diversity of this area of Wannakee and trying to really promote and make Wannakee the very best it can possibly be, because it is an outstanding place in so many respects, with this glaring exception. Um, you got to engage and get some actual training. And it would be really helpful besides these listening sessions, if you're engaging, again, I go back to the, the liaison thing, and maybe that's, you know, more than one person, but um, engaging with people of color when it comes to diversity or people that are facing the discrimination in terms of what kind of training you're talking about and, and understanding that. Um, because I don't, I think there's a lot that you may not understand. I don't want to assume that, that all of you are completely uneducated as far as diversity and discrimination and things like that. Um, but I think there's a lot that you just inherently wouldn't necessarily understand. So drawing, so I think training really should be a priority for you guys. If you, if you're, if you put that training off, you are sending a very clear signal to the rest of the people of color in this community that this is not important. We can go ahead and kick this down the road. And you can have all the listening sessions you want, but if you don't even know what to do with the information you're given in those listening sessions because you haven't had the training, then what is the point of the listening session? And in fact, you could actually make the situation worse by mishandling information that's given to you without the proper training. So I just would like you to reconsider the importance of doing that. And that's another thing. Um, as far as these listening sessions, I'm not sure exactly what entirely is the point of having the listening sessions if there's not actually any action. I understand it's going to take time. Again, I go back to the training portion of things. I understand it's going to take time. I've worked in the government myself. I worked for the city of Madison. I understand bureaucracy. Um, however, there does have to be some sort of movement and action. Otherwise, these listening sections, these listening sessions very, seem more voyeuristic than anything. Let me hear your worst stories so I can shock and awe you into action. And some of it's not necessarily the whole shock and awe, some of it's more subtle, but it's so consistent that it is degrading and it needs to be dealt with. Um, and I'm very concerned that, again, I heard mentioned that there was not anybody wanting to necessarily hear from people outside of Wannakee. I get that. You guys are elected to represent Wannakee, the city, you know, or Wannakee proper, and not necessarily us outlying areas. I happen to live in Westport. Um, but Vienna and some of the other areas. Uh, my child has attended school here since kindergarten. She's now 15. I patronize all of the businesses in Wannakee, all of your outlying areas, even those people who have kids that may live in Middleton or whatever, they patronize these businesses in Wannakee. If you are then saying that all of us who are invested in this community, who may live just outside the city, the, you know, village limits of Wannakee itself are not important, are you then saying that our money into these businesses are also not important? Because that's what you've just done. That's the impression that I was personally, personally left with after watching that last board meeting where it was, nope, I represent Wannakee and Wannakee only. I don't care what anybody else has to say. Really? Because I think you do care when it comes to business, certainly. And I think you do want my and everybody else's dollars. And I think if all of us stopped contributing dollars into the local economy, I think then you might want to listen. So I'm just saying, that's something to consider when you guys are thinking about who you're listening to about all of these things, because we're in town. We're interacting with your local people. That's another thing. I also agree, however, I do agree, we are not Madison. That's why I'm saying draw on some people from your, your, this area, some people who are invested in this area, some people who care about this community, some people of color here, instead of going off of theories and ideas or what you think is best, maybe really dig in and ask and talk to some of us people of color. You can't, what works in Madison as far as diversity and everything else is not going to work in Wannakee. I have said that a thousand different times with a thousand different people in this community, um, Zooms and everything else. We're not the same. We do not have the same kinds of issues that Madison has. That I agree with wholeheartedly. But we are a community and we should be drawing on the people within that community to help fix, fix the problems at hand, which in this case happens to be racism, diversity, and that kind of a thing.
Sorry. Thank you Cass for all your comments there. Um, lot, lot to digest. You went through a lot of different things there. And I thank you for going through all those things. And um, this is a listening session for me, and so I'm, I'm taking in everything that you're saying and um, you know, I appreciate you coming on here and saying that. And know that we are, we are taking action and we are taking steps. And we are looking at different things right now that we can do. Um, I, I, as you said, things don't always go as fast as people want them to go. And it could be as, you know, simple as we waited 15 years to build a library. Um, you know, there was, there was a long wait for that. Um, this shouldn't take 15 years. I just think that we need to make sure that whatever system we set up to educate our population, and I think that's so critical in this whole process, is making sure that our community gets educated. Um, that, that's, that's what I'm focused at. Um, that education is going to come from all different walks of life. It can't be, it can't be just me, that white 50-year-old male, that, that demographic is, is there. Um, it has to come, you know, from, from many different sources. So that's, that's where I'm at with that. So I appreciate all your comments though.
I'm sorry that you cut out just that last section. Can you repeat what you just said?
I, I appreciate all the comments that you made and uh, really just, you know, going through and making sure that all people, all walks of life are included with the decisions that we're making. Um, I, I, as I said, I'm, I'm a white 50-year-old male. I'm in that demographic. Um, I don't know all the different demographics, but, what the thoughts are. Haven't been exposed frankly to, to a lot of the different ones. So getting people's input is important. So I listened to everything you said and I appreciate all that you said.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that. And I appreciate you saying you want to make sure that you can educate everybody. But I, I'm more concerned about you guys getting educated first, so that you are able to be better leaders. Not saying that you're bad leaders, but before we can educate everybody, how about we start with you guys? That's one thing. And another thing, just like what Angie said, she's got people that come to her. I've got a bunch of people that have come to me that would never speak up to you. So having people come to you, guess what? I can come back to you and I can go ahead and give you listening session, story after story, but keep putting my hand up for every single person I've talked to. I'm sure Angie can do the same thing for every single person that talks to her. That's the point. So that's not going to do a whole lot if you don't realize the value and the reason why that happens, is all I'm saying. I'm trying to make it easy. I want it to be easier for you and productive for you and the rest of the village.
Yeah, I appreciate, I, I understand that, exactly what you were saying. So, thank you. I appreciate that. Erin, do you have any comments?
Well, I don't know, I was about to go, but I can go, but you were, have to.
Yeah, I was just going to add quickly, um, I'm not sure where, where it was said that we don't have training dollars um, in the budget. Uh, we, um, we definitely do have dollars available to do different programs. Um, there's aspects of our budget today that's different because of COVID, for example. A lot of our external training opportunities have been foregone. So there is budget available to do creative things with training. And uh, Chris, Chris saw some communications just today uh, on researching options for working with the village board specifically to get started on that. So Cass, I want to assure you that that, that that is a, that stands as a priority and it is not unfunded.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for speaking and all the comments. I fully agree with so much of what you said. And I, I think our, at least my concern of just the point, like one liaison or, you know, relying on one person is like, we want to make sure we're doing this productive, as you said, and involving also like all parts of our village, like the library and the senior center and, you know, community services. And I think making sure that whatever we do, we're doing it right and doing it well. And I don't think that, I'm appreciative and I think we do need to do it soon and this isn't a delay. Um, but I, I do want to make sure we're committing to something, we're going to commit to doing it really well and um, involving as many voices um, as we can. So um, I'm engaging people and I want to be more engaged. I want to do that myself. And I hope the rest of the board turns to, um, I, to think back to when I first ran, I was for village board. It was because I, I really saw one person, one woman on the board. And that's something I, I think more women should be in office. And so um, I think so, so things like that, like I think we need more diversity and so many levels of representation. And I think it's an important push that we all can, can make.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Thanks Cass, nice to hear from you again. Um, I see, I see Brad Hogard has his hand up. All right, Cass, I'm going to send you back out and bring in Brad. Okay, there you go, Brad.
Okay, thanks. Um, as a follow-up, yeah, I have nothing against QuickTrip. That's the only place we get gas and groceries from. But I was more concerned about the number of gas stations in Wannakee, but it sounds like it's in the plan. So I got two questions and they've been on, I was going to contact the village or the police department, but we've done a great job of putting bike paths on Woodland Drive. And I know some of that goes into um, Westport. Um, our family are big walkers. And I know that is a multi-use pass, path, excuse me. But in the last few weeks, my wife and I get frustrated that the bikers aren't using the bike path in the road and they're honking their bells and they're saying, move over to the people that are walking on the bike path. So I'm assuming ordinance allows that. But what about the smaller sidewalks? I mean, we live on Dover Drive and we encounter that all the time walking on the sidewalk. And we're the ones then having to vacate the sidewalk so the bikes have to leave. So I, I didn't know if there's any sort of ordinance or, or what our policies on that are.
I am not sure, Brad, but I can find out for you. Um, have we, I might have your email. But if, if you wouldn't mind, shoot, I've got the question noted. Just shoot me an email with your contact info and I'll follow up with you.
Sure. And we also had some resident, other residents that actually have asked this question. And um, the police generally would say that it's safer in some spots for especially kids to be up on the sidewalks with their bikes. Generally, they should be in the bike paths though. Um, I agree with you, the, the, I don't, we don't know each other, but at least I don't think we do. Um, but we had some seniors that were saying the same thing, some seniors that are out walking and, and it's a challenge for them to go off of the sidewalk because of balance issues and other things. So we need to, we need to look at this and, and take it a little more seriously, I think, than, than what has been done. So I appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah, and I think to your point, when my wife and I talked about that, if it was a family that had young kids, we'd have been okay with it. But the, the people that were hollering at us to move over, I mean, I'm mid 40s, I guarantee they were older than me. So that's maybe what frustrated us. Um, I do have a, another question unless somebody else's turn.
No.
I was just going to add though, Brad, that it may be appropriate for us to, to share a reminder about um, depending when I find out about some of the regs on bikes on sidewalks, to post a reminder on the social, village's, village's social media or even in our newsletter on the topic. So we'll take a look at that.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I, I contacted Bill Fredericks back in 2017. Um, we use First Choice Dental here in Wannakee and we've been using Anamart. And there's that stretch south of that church all the way down to uh, is it, hang on, I should know what it, Water Wheel Drive, where that pavement is not fully up to level with Water Wheel and Simon. And I contacted Bill in 2017 because I was actually kind of concerned for First Choice Dental. Here's a new dentist office and the road going into their parking lot is, is terrible because he always had to go over the, the bump. And Bill pushed it back onto Don Turney and he put Don Turney on the email and said, because it's a development, it goes to, it's Don Turney's responsibility. I never heard back from Don Turney. I had dropped him an email. Now, for, to hold myself accountable, since the fall of 2017, I haven't followed up with anyone on this. Um, I have a dentist appointment tomorrow, six months ago, and I had it, the road wasn't, you know, paved that small section. So I'm pretty sure tomorrow won't be, I mean, what can we do or who do I talk to? I mean, we got to be putting some pressure on Don Turney. I kind of feel bad for First Choice and Anamart and some of those businesses now.
So I, I, I'm happy to have a conversation with Mr. Turney about it. I actually work right down by Anamart, so I know exactly where you're talking about. And yet you are right, it won't be done tomorrow. Um, before you get, um, at, at this point. But uh, yeah, it's something that we would, we would have to look at and see where he's at with the different projects that are going in there. We've got to take that into account too for him.
I think typically development agreements, Chris.
We don't want to ruin a road during the development process. Put it in first and then have it ruined.
Yeah, typically our developments, Chris, involve a timeframe upon which the final lift has to be added, regardless of whether there's development activity or not. Um, so I think that's something we're So I think that's something worth checking on, you know, it's been, it's been a couple of years. And I'm just not what that, not sure what that timing is. So we do, we do try to take the approach of giving it, being cautious with the pavement surface for a while. But at, at some point, and to Brad's point, it gets, it gets that, it's just that it's been there too long. And that's why our development agreements cover that, cover that issue. So we'll look into it.
I would absolutely expect from, if your first complaint was 2017, I'm pretty sure that's at least three years ago now. So with the math, so yeah, it, we, I'll have a conversation with Mr. Tierney tomorrow if I can, and we'll see what we can get done.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Nice talking to you again. I, there's a key, a question up in Q and A, Chris. Oh.
It's just from Cass. It's a comment that she, is this, can everybody see these? I'm not sure if they're, so if everybody can see them, that's great.
I think so. But, but Cass, I, we appreciate you coming on and speaking up on, on the issues that are, that are really important. So, okay. No other hands up. We've got a couple newcomers that have come in. Oh, by the way, I didn't push the record button in time, Chris. We always try to post, we already, we always try to post the, the listening sessions on to our YouTube channel. So people can see and hear the questions. I missed about our first five minutes. So what I will do, Chris, in addition to pushing the video, I'll do a written recap of what was missed at the start. There were a couple of questions there at the start, so I'll do that.
Appreciate that. Okay, anyone else that has any questions or comments, anything? You know, I always like to have at least one nice comment about the village, saying something that looks good. They're appreciative of anything like that. Because generally during these listening sessions, we hear about the things that we can be doing better and that's great. But I also like to hear about the things that we're doing well. And if we're not doing well, that's, that's, that's not good. So I'll make a comment that I think our staff has done an absolutely fabulous job dealing with the COVID situation we have, taking care of our village, making sure our employees are safe, making sure our residents are safe, doing all the things they have. So I would say that's a, a very, I'll openly say to our staff, great job and, and making sure the public is informed. Our website has kept up to date with all the latest, working with the county executive. He was on our board meeting Monday night, going through the different things that are happening at the county level. So that's a, you know, comment that I would make, that's a positive thing that I hope all of you are following. And COVID has not been an easy thing for a lot of businesses in our community, as well as a lot of our residents, frankly. So I'm looking forward to that day where everybody's out and about and being able to interact with one another and talk and enjoy the weather and do all the fun things that we're used to doing. So just like everyone else. Todd, can you?
Yeah, I, I just say that there's a comment that the chalk wall is awesome. It's, that's been a, a nice project. Actually, Erin's on with us. It was Erin's, Erin's sort of brainchild that she thought of when we were having a Create Wanakee Committee meeting about a month ago. She's seen it done in other places. It worked out really well here. And I will let everybody know. It rained last night, so the chalk got all messy. Couple volunteers came out there this morning. Boy, I put out a call for volunteers on the Want to Talk Diversity page. And I think it was in less than 10 minutes, there were two people out there with a bucket wiping it down and it is clean. It is a clean slate again for comments. I don't know if it's already been added to, but, but please, we'll continue the conversation on the topic of, of what racial equality means and why it's important for us here in Wanakee.
And I'm really excited that it expanded.
We expanded it with the amount of paint that we had left, but Ace's closed. So we, if need be, we'll buy some more and we'll, we'll extend it even further.
It's cool how quickly new to be responded to that, both the call for help. But in general, I buy, buy at least once a day when I'm, I'm my, I cried or, and just see what's new. And you know, you said it's a good opportunity to learn too. I'm excited to see what can unfold.
Speaking of Create Wanakee, something I'm excited about, Chris, or, or enjoy about the village is some of the talented people in the village and their artistic abilities. And just this morning, there's 12 decorated, artistically decorated butterflies that have been mounted on the streetlight poles along the center portion of our downtown. I've kind of stretching from about QuickTrip down to that daycare, Mopet's daycare on different poles. So should be six on each side. And they're really beautiful works of art and we auction those off in the fall to support a couple of good causes. So check those out if you haven't already.
Any other comments or questions from residents? I'll just say the Create Economy, this, your committee is doing a fabulous job. Erin and Todd with everything that you guys are leading with it. And I appreciate all you're doing with that. And I guess one question I have is, you know, one of the things that I've heard out in the community is, you know, we're talking about ethnicity and various other things. Are we incorporating any of that within our Create Wanakee group? So, you know, whether it's a celebration to whatever into the future. I mean, obviously we're celebrating 150 years next year in the community. It'd be great to, you know, talk about our, our Native American culture during that event, you know, include, include them into it. I think, I think we're part of the whole chunk nation was where it was here. Is that correct, Todd?
I believe that's the case. Yep.
So there's some, there's several, a couple of residents that we have that are part of the whole chunk nation that we probably should reach out to for that. So I don't want to dominate any of this conversation right now. So.
Yeah, we do have a hand up though. Angie gets the award, the trifecta award for, for her third time speaking. Welcome back, Angie.
Thank you. Just wanted to share about the wall that the Create Wanakee staff and Erin put up by the old library. Just wanted to say that I shared it on the Wanakee and Espanol page. And people are excited about it. And I think we're going to start to see some posters in Spanish.
Awesome.
Very nice.
I'll take my daughter with me. I was stuck with German in high school, so I'm gonna have to take my daughter with me who's had four years of Spanish.
Oh, great. Yeah, I don't think German's gonna be any good.
And I, believe me, I can't speak any anymore. I, I tried to learn German because my grandparents in Michigan, Grandma and Grandpa Schmidt always spoke German. And we thought as grandkids, they were always talking about us. So I thought I could learn German and then I might be able to figure it out. And by the time I could maybe make out a few words, they both passed away. So it, it's all lost on me now. Well, that's great.
I know that's, that's, that's big in our community is trying to keep our, our roots. You know, years ago, it was the opposite, like kids were ashamed for speaking Spanish. But now we're, we're bringing that back and having our children grow up with main bilingual, which has been great for me. And I really want to keep that going. Thank you for listening three times.
That's great.
Thank you, Angie.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Did another question come in on the Q and A? Or maybe it, no.
Just a comment. Brad just thanked us for, and for what we're doing for the village.
Thanks, Brad.
All right.
So a couple of people are on who, I guess before we pop off, a couple of people are on who hadn't, haven't, I see they're watching. They haven't shared a comment, which is fine, but our ears, our ears are open. What, if you, last chance, last call for hands up, right, Chris?
For this listening session, yes, but obviously reach out to us with any other questions you might have or staff. So that's always available to you. All right. Well, I'm just, I, I hope nobody is offended by this. Angie, Brad, Cass, Holly, hi, Nyla and Sam. Thank you guys for being on here tonight, listening, asking questions. And we appreciate all that you guys do for the community as well. So.
One, one thing I'd add, Chris, super easy way to get answers to anything. If you go to wanakee.com, right in the middle of that page, when it pops up is this bubble that says, ask anything Wanakee. Ask anything. That's what it says. And it just says, ask anything. And that is in fact, what it's for. So anything comes up, concerns, complaints, curiosities, what have you. That comes into Village Hall staff and we get it to the right department to then provide you with an answer or to provide the general community with an answer. So, so it's super easy to get to.
Two things, give me a question and answer.
Okay, go ahead.
Sam Kaufman said, working with Bill Frederick on removal of trees blocking Six Mile Creek. He's been very helpful. Thanks. We'll absolutely pass that on to Bill. I think the creek, we're doing a lot actually within the creek right now with the path that went in front of the library as well as down for the new section that's been created into Six Mile. And there's been a lot of things removed from the creek and we will continue to do that. I will be afraid of a certain spot because there's supposedly a thousand snakes in that area and I just won't go into that. But that's down towards the western side of, of the village. And, but yes, thanks for sharing, sharing that, Sam. We'll make sure we let Bill know that. Creating the paths has been a very good thing for our community. I believe so. And then Holly, thanks for saying thanks. We appreciate it, you know, that, that you're coming on and listening. All right. With that said, Todd, any other comments you would like to make? Erin?
Nope. I appreciate people taking the time to join us today. And this doesn't end our listening. Email, ask anything, what have you, please reach out, out to us with questions.
And if you're a hot weather lover, this is your time. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Bye, everyone. Great night.